We enjoyed our worship indoors, just to be safe. As most of you know, I'm Jennifer Smith. I am the Congregational President at this time. And I'm very excited to have our Town Hall meeting today to discuss our ministry site profile and the call process as we continue to move forward in calling away pastors. It's a very, very exciting day. So I am not going to speak much. I am here to introduce our special guest and our call committee. So shall I introduce the call committee first? Okay, yes. So I'm actually going to have them take out my microphone and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Katie Ferguson.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Traut.
I was just doing some... ...there on the office. I think that one there.
Dennis Foster.
Alan Flicker, I'm also on the council table.
And we're missing our student representative, Ashley Johnson, this evening, and Jen Hodgman, who had a previous family vacation planned. So I think it's okay that we allow her to go on that. And Dan, just for reference, he was on our transition team. So he specifically was a representative chosen to make sure that all that we found in our year of transition process thinking, gathering of information was sought out and utilized in putting together our ministry site profile. So our special guest today, I'm very excited to introduce to you Reverend Susan Miller. She is here from the Synod and to explain and answer questions and start our process for us. So thank you for coming tonight.
So thank you for having me tonight. This is always an exciting meeting for me because it's a time when your call committee and the group that's been working so hard on your transition gets a chance to present what they've learned, what they know about the congregation, what they've learned about the congregation to you, and you get a chance to talk back or talk with them. And I like during that time of this meeting to be like a church mouse. I sit and I listen to the conversation because in that listening to the conversation, both the ministry site profile comes alive and also I learn a lot more about you and about your congregation. I just have a few initial remarks that I want to make before we turn our attention to the ministry site profile. And the first thing, I met with the call committee at 5:30 tonight, and I told this to them at that time, and I want to tell it to you as well. The first thing I want to talk about is that I think that this process, the call process, is a really important partnership that we have between the Office of the Bishop and the congregation, and your congregation. And it's a partnership in two very important ways. The first way is that we both want the same outcome. We both have the same hope for outcome, which is the next best chapter of St. John's history. That's what you want, and believe me, that's what the bishop's office wants as well. When you're happy, we're happy. When you're doing ministry, we feel good about the ministry that we can support you with. So we both want that same outcome, and I think that it's really important to remember that. The second way that we're partners is that the Office of the Bishop knows the candidates and knows the process. But you folks and your call committee know St. John's better than we ever will. I mean, I could come and live here for a year, and I still wouldn't know it as well as the people on the call committee do. So throughout this, I'll say to them, and they heard me say this tonight, that what I outlined is a normative process, but then they tell me how it's going to work for this congregation. And I can present candidates, and you know, I can present two candidates, both of whom look really good to me, and they may be both great pastors, but one of them will work here with you and one wouldn't work at all. And that's partially because the call process is about relationships. And it's also because congregations have personalities as well as people having personalities. And we want to make sure that we get that match that's going to be good for you to grow and good for that pastor, that candidate, to grow as well. So that's another way that the Synod does, that the Office of the Bishop and the congregation participate together. I have done, okay, I have been in this Synod doing this work for three years. And in three years, I have placed over eighty-five candidates in one way or another. Some are interim pastors, like Esther John, and some are settled pastors. But we've worked with over eighty-five call processes in one way or another. And before I did it here, I did it in the St. Paul area Synod for eleven years and in New Jersey for about three years before that. So I have a lot of knowledge of the process. But you still have the best knowledge of your congregation, and we want those two things to work together. The second thing I wanted to just mention is why this ministry site profile is important. And again, as you can see, it's a pretty extensive document. I think it's important for two reasons. The first reason is if you used to be, and many of you in the room might remember this, when a pastor left, there was a kind of a circle-the-wagons mentality, like, let's just get through this. Let's get this next pastor to come here. And then that pastor will tell us how we're supposed to be in ministry. That pastor will lead us. You know what we discovered? We discovered that that didn't always work very well, partially because congregations, as I've said before, have your own personalities. You know what your ministry and mission is. And so these days, what we want to ask is the question, we want to say it a little bit differently. We want you, which is what your transition team and your call committee has done, to really think about the questions, like, where is God leading us? And what are we going to be about in this congregation and in this community? And then you go to pastors. Your call committee has the responsibility of going to pastors and saying, "This is where we think God is leading us. Can you work with us on that?" It's just a little bit of a different mentality, but it's a really important difference. So that's why the profile is important. The second reason the profile is important is that sometimes in doing the profile, and I don't know if this happened, but sometimes in working on the profile, things emerge that you didn't expect. I remember working with a congregation in Maplewood, which as many of you might know is a first-string suburb of St. Paul. And in that neighborhood, there were a lot of what we might call starter homes. And the people in the congregation that I was working with thought that those starter homes would have young families, for the most part, in them. What they discovered, as they did some research, was that sixty-five percent of those starter homes were either single people or single heads of households, which meant that if they were going to reach out to the community, the ministry was going to be different. They had no idea of that before they did the ministry site profile. So that's the two reasons why we think this meeting is important. The third thing, or the profile itself, is important. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is why do we do this meeting? And the first reason is the profile has been put together by, you know, the transition team. And I know many of you have been involved in different ways in the work that they've been doing. They've been having events and talking with you and by the call committee, which is great. This meeting helps that profile to come to life. It goes from two-dimensional to three-dimensional. The other thing that's really important, I think, about this meeting is that things do also emerge in this conversation. One time I went to a congregation, this was many years ago now, to do a meeting like this when we were just starting these types of meetings. And there was a question on the profile about the organizations that they were involved in or supported in the community. And they were listed, about fourteen or fifteen organizations. And I thought, wow, this is a really active parish. We got into this Town Hall meeting, and when we got to that question, people all over the sanctuary, and there were about a hundred people in the sanctuary, they started raising their hands and saying, "But you didn't mention this group, and who didn't mention this group?" And they must have listed another fourteen or fifteen groups that weren't listed on the profile. And I just thought, wow, they really are an active parish. And then as I thought about it, and we talked about it a little bit with the call committee, we realized something else, which was that this congregation that I was talking about was a mile wide, and it wasn't very deep. Everybody had kind of their old pet projects, and they didn't really do things together. And so we looked for a little bit of a different type of pastor. The pastor we looked for was somebody who would be able to give them the depth and the unity that they needed. The best part of that story is that they found that pastor. They called, and that pastor was there for about ten years, which is pretty much what we expect of a lead pastor, that they'll be there about a decade. And I went back, just before I left that position, I went back to that congregation for another one of these meetings. And when I got there, and they were talking about who they were as a congregation, almost every person who stood up to talk started with the sentence, "We are a Christ-centered congregation." They had found their depth over those ten years of that pastor's ministry. So they didn't know what I knew from ten years ago. But for me, it made me feel really, really good that that pastor had done the work that he had been called to do. So those are just some reasons why we do this meeting. I thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to turn this over to the call committee now, who's going to present the profile to you. And then at the end, I'll come back, and we can have some more conversation, and I can answer questions. It'd be like a stop the Synod time.
Dennis?
Thank you. Before I start, I want to thank Pastor John for his leadership in getting us to this point and the transition team for the work they did to get us to this point. That really laid the groundwork for what the call committee started with and what we had to work with to get through the process here. Let's see. She talked about the recent skip that. So if you have the document in front of you, it's a pretty arduous document to sort through. It's got a lot of pages. It's really broken out into these sections. There's five that are important. We're going to talk through parts of all five of those. But just to give you an idea of kind of how the document's laid out, that's how it's laid out. Those are all the sections that are in that document. There's a lot of detail in there, a lot of things we can talk about. We're not going to go through all those. Some of these things, we know very well, so it doesn't really need to be talked about. Other things, maybe seen for the first time, so we should talk about those things. So the ones we're going to talk about are the ones in red. We put the bathroom in. It's kind of, okay, that's where we're going to go with this. And this will take quite a while in itself. So as we go through, the top right corner of which you're going to see up here is a little key that talks about where we are in the profile. If you want to follow along with the paper copy and you get lost, you can always get unlost by looking up there. Okay? That's just a little groundwork for our work on this. So we'll start. So the part I want to talk about first is actually the part for "and." This is important because it illustrates how we got to where we are today. Over the past year, we've had a transition team in place working with a pastor. This team's goal is to answer six critical questions. You can see the questions there. That's what the transition team worked on in their year-plus time together. The team, we, the call committee, I'm sorry. The transition team engaged the congregation in lengthy and healthy discussions to understand their experiences, thoughts, and feelings. The team then summarized what they learned to answer those six questions. This information was used as the basis for completing the ministry site profile. Hopefully, you'll see that ties together with the transition team work and the things that we've done since then. Using the information gathered by the transition team, the council, the transition team, and call committee collaborated to formulate the responses that are in the ministry site profile. So hopefully, you'll see as we go through this that it was collaborative. Hopefully, it reflects the input that these different groups received from you and the rest of the congregation. And that's how we got the information. That's how we got the MSP to where it is today. So now jumping back to the start, summary description. This is the first thing that any candidates looking at us will see. And hopefully, this will sort of pique their interest and get them a little bit of a snapshot of what we're doing. So St. John's is an active and engaged congregation with many active ministry and mission programs. Recent work throughout the transition process has validated the visioning work completed over the past several years. And we have a sense of the need to change to meet the future. This congregation has many engaged members willing to share their time, talent, and treasures. The congregation is ready for and needs a visible leader who understands church in today's world and has the skills to work alongside us and guide us into the future. So a lot to tap into that paragraph. Thoughts looking about us, where we are, a little bit about what we're looking for, the type of leader we're looking for. So hopefully, this will pique the interest of the right candidate, of course, as they start to look at this. Okay, I think we're on to... Yes?
This question relates to our goals. What are the primary goals of your ministry site if we refer to any strategic plan that has been adopted? Well, while this looks like quite an intimidating question, it was pretty easy for the call committee because the transition team worked extensively on this and actually answered one of the critical questions. Those answers fit right in here. So numbers two through eight came from the transition team. In their answer to the question, I think it was, "How will we succeed?" Number one was added by the council on the call committee. We thought that that fit here real well, too. So I'll go through them just quickly. The question deals with goals. So we start out with, "We will strive to achieve these goals," basically. And number one, which we added, was have a clear understanding of our purpose and guiding principles. And that came from the transition team as well. And you'll see that a little later in the presentation, those purposes and the guiding principles. Then, "We will invest and empower people to lead and serve, be intentional in our evangelism, foster intergenerational faith relationships, connect with the greater community in visible ways, teach model generous giving to remain financially liable, offer unique and innovative forms of worship, fellowship, service, and education, and communicate clearly and consistently using all media." I would add that a lot of those, a lot of that input came from you. The congregation has the transition team surveyed you during the course of the last year. Moving on, next one, "Energy." What is your congregation or organization really excited about right now? Well, guess what we're excited about? We are really excited about searching and calling for a new pastor, obviously. And the council, the call committee, we are actually really excited. And we hope that the congregation shares our excitement as well to start down the road of calling a pastor. Also, some other things that we are excited about. We are very excited that our ministry staff and congregational volunteers have grown their presence and capability during our time of transition and have emerged as leaders. The capability and enthusiasm they bring will serve us well as we move forward. Also, we've been seeing new members. There's evolution in our education programming, and that also adds to our excitement. But if you think about it, there is a lot of things to be excited about at St. John's right now. So we certainly hope you share that excitement with the rest of us. Okay, next, "Partnership." This is one that I will admit is an educational opportunity for me because I wasn't really aware of all of our relationship to the greater church and all that happened and went on at the Synod level and the ELCA level. And so I'm learning as I go here. And what I've learned so far is St. John's is an active member and participant in the ELCA and the Southeast Minnesota Synod. And we have a good relationship with the Synod and the staff. We've been working to strengthen our relationship with the ELC by gaining a better understanding of the ELCA's mission and working to align our vision and mission with that of the ELCA. We actively participate in annual assemblies and provide annual financial support. And this was an important one. As the call committee talked about in the next sentence, we thought was very important. We're very proud of it. And we think it speaks well of St. John's and describes St. John's. A large portion of the youth attending the 2018 assembly were representatives of St. John's. And I think that just speaks volumes about the young people we have in our congregation and the youth programs that we have in our church. So very excited about that one as well. And I'm looking forward to learning more as we go forward in the process. Alyssa?
Okay, if you would like to follow along, we're on page six now of the MFT. And these were statements that we needed to mark check boxes if something sounded a lot like us or a little like us. And on either side of the check boxes are statements where we had to kind of figure out, you know, where we fit best. So for the first line there, we said, "We tend to be formal and problematic." That sounds a little like us. "A little like us" is also having clearly defined goals and plans for our future. And as far as being racially and economically diverse, we said that we are demographically homogeneous, and that sounds a lot like us. And so that, those were questions all on community, our community that our church is in. As far as our leadership style goals, we welcome ideas that are provoking and challenging. We said, "This sounds a little like us." We said that we rely on group decision-making, that that is a lot like us. And we have learned how to use conflict constructively. This sounds a little like us. As far as our programming here at church, our facilities are often used by community groups. This sounds a lot like us. We train people to minister inside our walls. We said, "It's a little like us." We focus on ideas and beliefs. We said, "It's a little like us." And then our theological perspective. We are obviously Lutheran in identity and practice. We said, "This sounds a lot like us." We are not very active in the Synod and ELCA. We said, "This sounds a little like us." And we focus on biblical studies and doctrine. This sounds a little like us. And I think as a group, we just kind of read through these. And I think, you know, I think we were able to kind of mark these off with a good amount of agreement. And, you know, we have some from transition team and council with us, too, as we were doing this, so.
Okay, I'm going to talk about our purpose. So how does this congregation or organization understand its reason for being in the light of God's call to mission and service? Who are you and why are you here? And this statement, we pretty much hold, I believe, word for word, right from transition team. And it's, "We are disciples of God, living in His grace as an inclusive community, worshiping together, growing of faith, serving others, and living as witnesses of Jesus Christ." And then, for giftedness. There were a lot of choices for this one, so we tried to narrow it down to the top three that we felt were the most important. So we said that we have a multi-generational congregation comprised of hard-working, educated, and giving people. The congregation has many active members that are devoted to their faith and ready to answer God's call. The second one, we have a spacious, wonderful, ADA-compliant facility with classrooms, fellowship hall, sanctuary, and several smaller meetings, spaces. These facilities are used daily for congregational and community activities. And then the third one is about the preschool, Creation Kids preschool. It provides a quality, Christian-based preschool program for children in our congregation and community. Our goals are to nurture the intellectual, spiritual, emotional, social, and physical development of each child. Our mission is to help children grow in their faith and love of God. And part of the reason we added that is we are the only church, I believe, around here who has a preschool like that. So we thought that was a real asset. And the obstacles, the most significant obstacle challenging us right now is finding a lead pastor to help lead and to add to the spirit of life that exists already and reaching people, both inside and outside of the church, and connecting them to work together toward a vision for the future. And the last one I'm going to talk about is the mission. So our mission is communicating a clear vision, creating a vision and communicating continuously through everything we do, establish a clear direction with a plan to move forward. The vision should guide our decisions and be visible in everything we do. And developing leaders, investing in and empowering people to lead and to serve are key to growing our ministry and mission. Teaching people to recognize their gifts and talents, showing them how to use them and trusting in them will equip them to answer God's calling. And the last one is developing relationships. We have opportunity to strengthen relationships within the congregation with those congregation members that are not currently engaged, with ministry staff, and the greater community. Effective relationships will get people connected to our ministry and mission and will lead to increased and more effective engagement.
Yeah, I'm down for just a couple more minutes. On pages eight and nine, then, and towards the bottom of eight and the top of nine, we're being asked about the type of leader we're seeking. So I'm not going to touch on every one of these points. But as far as experience goes, there were check boxes here in how many years of experience ideally we would like our new pastor to have. And there was quite a bit of discussion on this. And input from council was taken and listened to as well. I think we're trying to balance a few things. We want someone who can come in with experience and lead us and, you know, be comfortable being a leader to a church of our size. Yet, there are people that really want someone with some energy and new and fresh ideas and that's relatable to our congregational members. And we did check two boxes here then. So we checked the ten-to-fifteen years and the sixteen-to-twenty years of experience. Also, I believe Susan was made aware that we wouldn't want to lose out on a good candidate just because the candidate didn't fit exactly in one of these check boxes, that, you know, having a good candidate is more important than the exact number of service. Also, to take into consideration with this is, you know, financially, what can our congregation afford? And, you know, that's just something to consider, too. So, let's see. I want to make sure I wasn't missing anything else there. Anything else any of you want to say on this? I know there was some discussion on this topic. Okay, then, again, here is a list of many different ministry tasks. And we were, excuse me, we were asked to check the five that seemed most critical of the tasks we would want in the person who becomes our lead pastor. And so we checked the following. Someone who can help recruit and equip leaders. A good preacher and someone to lead us in worship. Someone who can provide spiritual formation and be a good director of our spiritual formation. Someone who can help minister to us in our daily life. And then also stewardship. Someone who can model, you know, how important it is to get... Someone who can model, you know, how important it is to give our time and our talents and our treasures and help inspire us all to do that. I think it's back to that.
The next, next one is gifts, gifts or talents, essential in this position. So, this is basically what type of individual we're looking for. This one was a little, maybe a bit more challenging, at least for me, probably for all of us. We spent quite a little time in this. We started out with 20, the list there, 25 gifts. And of course, every one of them was something that would be really good talent or skill for a pastor to have. And, but we had to, we had to narrow it down. And the transition team did this exercise as well as the council and as well as the call committee. Actually, you all helped as well because if you recall the game board, any of you that filled out the game board, there was actually a spot on the game board that described a perfectly pastor than we would be looking for. And so, all that, with all that input, we spent some time in this and attempted to get down to it. Top priority are the ones that say yes on the left. And very helpful are the ones that say yes on the right. And you like, you will probably see some reoccurring themes here as we kind of go through some of these. And hopefully, hopefully, this reflects all the information that's been gathered over time. Help people develop their spiritual life, top priority. Build a sense of community among people with whom he or she works, top priority. Help others develop their leadership abilities and skills for ministry, top priority. Be an effective administrator, very helpful. Be an effective communicator, top priority. Be effective at working with youth, youth, very helpful. Deal effectively with conflict, very helpful. Not that we're anticipating conflict, it's just that in a larger organization, there's always going to be differences in a ticket. And we think a skilled leader knows how to deal with that. Bring joy and good humor to relationships, very helpful. This one was when it showed up on the game board. I think it said something to the order of a good sense of humor, something along those lines. Be able to share leadership and work in a team, top priority. Be creative and innovative about his or her tasks, very helpful. Okay, next slide please. This, this one deals with the expectations. Please list the five priority areas of activity or focus that you wish a new lead call pastor to give special attention to during first year of his or her ministry in the congregation. This is something we also spent a lot of time on, we came up with these five. Learn about St. John's and who we are today. Get to know the people and staff, learn what they have going on, and learn about our active ministries and establish a good understanding of where we are today. B, understand the transition team's work to identify purpose and guiding principles, using that as a basis. Guide the formation of a vision for the future, clearly communicate the vision and define actions to achieve it. You've all seen the purpose and guiding principles before, I won't read those. Cohesively lead, inspire, and develop talents of staff and lay leaders. Provide relatable, relevant, and inspiring sermons, provide sermons that inspire and tie teachings to everyday life. We heard this one multiple times as the transition team went through the survey process. We heard this multiple times from all of you. Inspire and excite congregation and community. Also, the other side of that is, what will we do? What will we do? What will we do to support and encourage our leader during the first year and help him or her to accomplish these responsibilities? And we think this is, this is our responsibility to a new pastor that comes on staff here. We will provide and support, a support team to assist with your transition into the congregation and community. Our leadership council will work with you to communicate purpose and guiding principles to establish and communicate vision and mission and to identify near and long-term goals and actions to achieve. Current staff, ministry and office staff will continue to lead program, worship, and operational activities as they do today. They will adapt to your style and personality as your transition evolves. We will welcome you and value your leadership. We are asking for leadership and are committed to allowing that leadership to work. And of course, we will offer continual prayer and we will ask for God's help and guidance as we move forward with you. Dennis? Oh, Al?
Well, just coming off vacation here, so I'm coming in a little bit rough, but, um... St. John's is an active congregation and we've just, we've reached an inflection point of where we've been in the last couple of years here. We realize that we need to stop and say, "Oh, okay, that's why we had the whole transition team activities and refocus ourselves as we move forward here." Feel it's critical to establish a vision and take action that will lead us successfully into the future. Understand that maintaining the status quo, the church is changing, not just our church, all churches are changing. As far as how people are coming to church, how they're getting their information and everything, the digital age, we have changed a lot and we need to stop and change just a little bit. Hopefully with this new pastor, we can effectively move some of this forward. To ensure a successful future, we're looking for a leader first, a preacher second, and a pastor third. We need our lead pastor to be somebody with the ability to develop the talents and skills of others. We have a lot of talented members of our congregation. We have a lot of skilled members of our congregation that have a wide variety of skills. Some are good writing, some are good cooking, some are good at sitting in the bus like I am. Y'all got to put our best foot forward, it works the best that way. Well, guiding us forward towards this vision, we need friendly personal communicator with the ability to connect with people through relevant and inspiring sermons. We need to be inspired. Maybe we're not inspired right now. Hopefully with new pastor, we'll get more inspiration. More inspiration, maybe others will come along and join us. It's important to point out our intentional focused work that's been done over the last year to move our congregation into a place of clear understanding and purpose. That's been the work that's been done by the transition team and also with the call committee and with the council. We've all three been working hand in hand to bring this about and to move forward. We've got to acknowledge our history. We have a long history. We've had a lot of pastors over the years and we've had a lot of good times, we've had some rough times. It happens. Right now, we're looking towards the future and that's where we need to go. We fell down some of our history a little far too long and we're going to get past that. Get a better understanding of the role of pastor, staff, leadership, and members. Current context of where St. John's now exists, we currently have many compassionate ministries and people involved with a growing legal leadership base. We need an individual who is ready to embrace our mission and ministries and support and guide our strategy for successfully fulfilling this purpose as well as build relationships with our members and the community. You want a pastor that is, builds relationships with the community. We have active ministries here that are helping, our Food for Friends program with the backpacks. I didn't know much about it. It is a wonderful program that is helping out people that are less advantaged than some of us, helping them have food, helping them have food in the summer. Not everybody is as fortunate as some of us. Can we hope that? So, Dennis, is this where we ask questions?
Don't worry, I have a mic for you.
So, that was a lot of information and I'm very sure it freed time. That was the content we planned to cover, we thought it was the most meaningful and most important, I'm sure that I've presented yourself. Initial reactions, comments, questions, concerns? Are we hitting the mark? Are we missing the mark?
I'm amazed at all the work that you've done. I mean, I shouldn't say I'm amazed, I am amazed. It's been great. Thank you so much for all, all those blood, sweat, and tears you're putting through. And, yeah, I'm excited to have a new pastor. But I like our old pastors too. But, yeah, it's exciting, thank you.
What are the synod's projections of for about how long, on the average, it will take from now this point upon completion of all this work?
God only knows. So, if, I expect to have at least a few names, and I'll talk about names in a minute. I expect that we will have a few names to the call committee within the next couple of weeks, within the next several weeks. And then they begin the interview process, which can take about two months, working with a couple, with several different candidates. So, my sense is the quickest that this ever goes, if we hit the mark right the first time, is that within about four months, you will have a congregational meeting and you will have a pastor here soon after that. It can take a lot longer. And it can take a lot longer for several different reasons, one of which is the available candidates. We, the, oh, I hate to start at this point, but I will. So, let me just, I want to give you a couple of statistics right now. The first statistic is that 56% of the ELCA clergy roster is over the age of 55. That means that in the next 14 years, about 400 pastors a year are retiring. That started happening two or three years ago, after kind of the recovery from 2008 from the financial crisis. And it will continue for about 14 years. We are graduating at this point about 200 pastors a year from seminary. It's not hard to do the math. We have 400 now that are leaving and 200 that are graduating. That means that we are down about 200 pastors a year. So, the clergy shortage, which we've heard about for years, and some of us who are old never believed it would happen, is happening. And that means that this is, I can never figure it out, it's a buyer's market for pastors. There are less pastors to go around and the pastors can be much fussier about the calls than they accept. With that in mind, I don't know. I mean, sometimes we hit it right and somebody comes right away. And one congregation I've worked with, I don't want to tell you this, but I'm going to tell you this, because when it doesn't happen to you, you'll feel better. I have gone through 85, about 80 names for this congregation. Now, not all of them have interviewed, but they have been in process for a very long time. So, we hope four months, but it could be longer.
Susan, could you share, when you and I had a conversation earlier this month, can you share some of the comments you made to me about us as a candidate though for calling a pastor?
Sure. So, to me, this is a very exciting congregation. You're, and you have a lot of, well, there's just a lot of excitement going on in St. John's. You're a forward-looking congregation. Not all of our congregations are forward-looking and pastors actually like to come to forward-looking congregations. You are, at our location in Southeastern Minnesota, there are three, I like to say this, there are three mechas for ELCA pastors in the United States. One of them is Chicago, everybody wants to go to Chicago. Everybody, all, all ELCA pastors want to go to the Pacific Northwest where there aren't any ELCA congregations. I don't know why they want to go there, but the few, they want to go there. And then they want to come to the Twin Cities or Southeastern Minnesota. And Southeastern Minnesota, more than any of the other Minnesota Synods, they want to come here. So, that's something that we have going for us. Your location close to Rochester is something that you really have going for you too, just because it's, it's good for spousal employment and that's a concern that many of our pastors these days have. The progressiveness of your congregation, pastors also love staff ministry and you have really excellent staff here. So, there's a lot of good things going for St. John's as far as looking for candidates. Did I say anything else that you wanted me to say?
That captured the ones that I knew that you were excited about and I just want everyone to hear that, not just me.
Right, right. And I do have to say, I really, I guess my question, I have a question for you as a congregation, and my question for you as a congregation is, what you heard tonight, does that adequately represent who you think, who you believe your congregation to be? Do you feel good about putting this out there and saying, "This is who we are"? Good. Because this is one of the best and most forward-looking ministry-side profiles that I've read, and I've read a lot of them in my years of ministry doing this work. So, you know, I think any pastor would be glad and excited to come here.
That was something else you told me to, thank you. Mark?
I have a question on page 10 of 13. And what we would provide, it says, "We will provide a support team to assist with your transition in the congregation and community." Do you have an idea how that's going to work?
Not exactly.
I said the same thing. Circle this, what are we doing with this?
I think we'll start, we'll probably start with the continuation of the call team's involvement of some sort. And then we'll have to augment that with whatever it is we think we need to provide to help that pastor in transition and that pastor's family in transition. So, I think it's a little bit undefined, but it will start with the call committee continuing the transition with that pastor.
I'm just wondering, sometimes it's hard to remember exactly who we are. We've had so many changes in 20 years. What is our identity? I mean, we've had three pastors, five associate pastors, nine interim pastors, and who are we? What's our continuity?
I think our continuity has to be the congregation. We have to be able to endure those changes as a congregation. Pastor leads us and helps us, but the congregation has to transcend those changes. Change is going to happen again?
I would like that pastor party evolve, but why are you supposed to understand?
There could be lots of reasons. There could be lots of reasons, maybe Susan has the statistics, but pastors, I don't think stay in churches as long as they used to stay in churches. I think that's a big one. Oftentimes, the congregation changes and pastors don't change with them. Communities change, churches change, there's change going on all the time. So, I don't think it's, I mean, it's unfortunate and it's painful, but I don't think it should be so surprising that, that we have turnover in our pastoral leadership. It doesn't make me like it. Maybe we'd like it to be longer, I think Susan maybe is going to talk about that here, but change happens.
I don't have the current statistics. I know that a number of years ago, we did some, we just did some informal, well, let me put this right. let me put this way, my husband served on a school board. And in his time on the school board, they discovered that it used to be a superintendent was superintendent for umpteen years, right? When your school had a superintendent. They discovered that the average time of a superintendent in a school district was under three years. So when pastors last in congregations for six to 10 years, that's pretty good. Um, it's just, it's the changing world. Um, and I, you know, we don't expect, we expect pastors to be in congregations for 10 years. It seems like every five years is a demarcation in ministry and ministry has to change after five years. So, um, you know, you get a pastor and that pastor stays and finishes a set of goals. And then the issue becomes, is there still more work that that pastor can do in the congregation? Or is it time for that pastor to leave and have another pastor come in and do that second, that's, that next five-year period? Most pastors seem to be able to go through about two of those periods. Very few of them can, and I don't, I don't know if it's pastors, I want to say something about that, but it seems that very few, after a while, people begin to expect how a pastor's going to behave and congregations fall into patterns. And the best way for new life to come is for people to change. And I've seen both pastors who have become, um, who have got into a pattern and stayed too long. I've also seen congregations that have not allowed their pastors to grow and change and have not grown and changed with them. So it's both and, it's just life. But back to what you said, I laughingly say that pastors come and pastors go, but a congregation is made up of the people within it. And a pastor comes to lead you, to walk with you, to, um, to mediate God to you and you to mediate God to that pastor for a period, for a season of life. But a congregation is, stays together much longer. You know, one of the great things about Luther is, or Lutheranism, is we really believe in the priesthood of all believers. And that congregations are here to be priests to one another, whether you have, and, you know, with pastoral leadership, but that pastoral leadership changes. Congregations don't change quite as quickly. Thank you.
Yeah. What kind of unique congregation, the fact that we for one time had a pastor that he was here for 35 years and then to make the change is very difficult. And we went through a lot of the things like Phyllis mentioned, all the different things. But what I observed over the years that we saw was the congregation stepping up. Rather than being a pastor-led organization, the congregation's gotten more and more and more leadership roles. And we've developed the different skills of different ages that we didn't have before. So all the way going through this transitional periods and kind of uncertainties, it's strengthened our congregation, I think, as a group, taking on those leadership roles as well. One of the things I really liked to see when they listed here was the fact that have the minister come in, learn about who we are and what we've done for a long time and take that first year to just get settled in and to find out what we're done. So while it's maybe been unsettling in some ways, I think it's made our congregation grow as well.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron, for saying that, because that was, I, I wanted to point that out too. So I was on the transition team and that was one of, that's kind of how we started our time, was really getting a handle on the history and looking at how the churches, not just ours, but churches have changed in general. And for me, and I also at this time, I want to, Pastor John, you've done an amazing job of leading us. So while there's been a lot of congregational members that have stepped up and the skills and the talents were there, we had an incredible leader that really challenged us and guided us through a lot of this. And I, I don't want to say it couldn't have ended without him, but I really do feel like he has been. He has shown us what God is leading us to do. Um, but it really was, for me, I've been in this church since I was five, so that's a lot, it's been a lot, it's been more years since I realized. Um, and I think for me, the realization, we talked about pastor-led churches and program-led churches and this and that, and just having that understanding, we're not a pastor-led church, we're in a completely different place. And just being able to let go of the expectations that we have held on to, including myself, for a pastor, this person that's supposed to be the do-all, be-all, that's not who we are. It's maybe what some of us want because it's easier and it's more comfortable, that is not who we are. And I, for myself anyway, realizing that, I all of a sudden was able to like take on a new ownership of my, my place in this church and a member, a member and one of God's children and what my role is in the world and in this community and in this church that I, even though I felt like I maybe had a hand on that, it's, it's totally changed my perspective. And so I think getting back, you know, to what you were saying, Phyllis, and some of the other comments that I've made, this time was a huge time of growth and development for a lot of people. Um, and that for me is what's been the most exciting to see because I just feel like there is this new level of ownership and I'm hoping that the group that's feeling that, that that's going to continue to extend out to others.
Sam's not just weaving me down, wants to talk.
I just want to add on to that a little bit. You know, um, having a congregation-led church as opposed to a pastor-led church, I think is a great thing because, you know, as we demonstrate pastors come and go, we are the congregation, we are the church, we are what we want to be, what we want to be in the community, how God is leading us to, to serve the community, to be St. John's. So I think that's great and I love how we're keeping our focus looking forward. The past is important. What we've been, what we've been through all dictates who we are now. But what's important now is how are we going to grow and learn from everything that we've experienced in the past 20 years and everything that we've been through? How can we take this knowledge and this gift God has given us and, and turn it forward and grow? How can we take St. John's and continue to move forward and spread our programs and reach out to the community and grow God's love around here? You know, we're hoping our community's going to keep growing. We're hoping there's lots of people coming into our community, lots of opportunities for us to reach out and help people who are less fortunate than us, lots of ways for us to take God's mission and do it. And, you know, remembering where we came from and how we got to the point that we are is important. I'm not trying to minimize that, but I think it's super important right now to, to take that and learn from it and look, look to the future, look to how we can take the next pastor and keep him with us for the 10 years, two, two ministry cycles, whatever, however you want to look at that. And then just see where we can go, see how they can help us be a better congregation.
And speaking to that, I just wanted to say, um, as a staff person who has been a big part of all the transition in this recent past and being, um, really involved with all of the communication, with getting things in from the game stuff, um, and with that forward-thinking, uh, looking forward stuff that we're talking about here, I am so pleased to see the way that this purpose and values has been summarized. We're disciples of God, living in His grace as an inclusive community, worshiping together, growing in faith, serving others and living as witnesses of Jesus Christ. Because I will tell you that I've been here for three years and I've been struggling to figure out what that statement that we used to have actually meant and what that, what that, what the purpose, um, actually was in a practical way. And this takes everything that I observed in those game nights and the communication that people from this congregation were giving and saying, this is what we want and this is what we need and this is what we see and we want to be centered in Christ and I'm seeing it here and I just, I'm so excited about that, that is just so good.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on the synod's involvement on providing the candidates for the call committee? And where I'm most interested in is, I understand the lack of potential candidates, but saying you have maybe, you know, five candidates, if you will, how do you screen through them from the synod office to make sure that they're a good match for being even considered by the call committee?
Sure. Okay. So let me just talk, can I talk generally about candidates and eventually reach your question? So can, first of all, I want to talk about where candidates come from. And they come from several, they come from actually five different places. One is they come from your own recommendations. St. John's sent to me recommendations or the names of six potential candidates. Now, I can't always tell you specifically what happens with them. We'll talk about how we research them. But I can say that any name I get from a congregation, I take very seriously as far as researching that person or that candidate. So that's the first way they come. The second way they come is that candidates can suggest themselves. They can look at, ever since St. John's has been in transition, you've been on the synod website, um, as a congregation in transition. So candidates can look at that and they can say, well, when St. John's comes available, that might be a congregation I'd be interested in looking at. Can you keep me in mind? And we do. So that's the second way they can come is by themselves. The third way they come is ever since you've been in transition, um, I have been reading and thinking about, I mean, well, I want to go back. The third way that they can come is that every other week, the synod staff, the bishop, the assistants to the bishop and my assistant, should be spread out, we sit around the synod office table and we talk about every congregation. And as, and as we talk about the congregations that are in transition, sometimes names come up and we write them down on the list. The fourth way that names come is that pastors submit their rostered minister profiles. And we get, um, a number of them. We get profiles for people who list our synod, so Southeastern Minnesota Synod. I get a number of them each, I used to say each week. I don't say each week anymore, but we get a number each month that we go through. And then the fifth way that they can come is if none of those ways, candidates don't emerge from any of those ways and from my own conversations with my colleagues and other synods in the area, then I can actually do an in harmony search where I would take your list of your top characteristics that you're looking for in a pastor and I match them with what pastors say by themselves. So that's kind of where candidates come. Now, how I do the searches is there, the first thing I look at is that every candidate comes with a confidential bishop's recommendation and I take those recommendations very, very seriously. So that's one of the first things that I read. You don't, the call committee does not see that. I see that and I read that. The second thing I do is if I don't know a candidate, I call that synod, that synod office and I ask to speak to someone, one of my colleagues there who would know that pastor well, to hear about their ministry and what they're doing. I read through their papers, um, knowing a little bit about you, which is why I'm here tonight, and a little bit, and, and reading through their papers. Then I will, if I, if I've been given permission by the synod to speak with them, then I will call them and have an interview with them. So all of those, those are all of the things that I do. I have to admit, and I've been thinking about this a lot lately, um, I've been doing this for a long time and some of it is, a lot of it is intuitive. I told the call committee tonight to trust their gut. Well, in a lot of ways, I trust my own gut as well. Just because I've been doing it for so long, it's kind of like, my husband once, he reads strange books, but he was reading a book about fighter pilots and he said that fighter pilots have instantaneous reactions. They don't even know that they're reacting to something, but they've been doing it for so long and they do it so well, they just know. Sometimes I feel like that. I mean, I don't want to say it, but I do feel like that in my job. I've been reading these papers for a long time, so I just pick off things. So that's, and I've read St. John's profile, I've been working with you, you know, Dennis and I have been talking for three years now, two and a half years now. So, and I, John and I have been talking, so I have some idea of who you are. And I put those together and come up with who I think are the best candidates. Plus, we're looking for, I mean, there, and then there are some external factors like years of experience. This is in a first-call position and things like that. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
I have a few questions, but. We have another question. Then I'll do my one or two more things.
It's probably a question you don't, you won't like, but, uh,
Sure.
But the, uh, you know, our synod, our ELCA keeps shrinking overall. Uh, you mentioned, you know, we've got, returning out about half the number of pastors that we need. Uh, you worship a couple synods or seminaries and you're settling off assets in St. Paul. Are we becoming the Toys R Us or the Sears in the future here? Or what is your solution? Is that the synod leadership is, is, you know, how do we solve that? Or is it saying that's just, just the way it is?
No, I don't think we're saying that's just the way it is. I think what we're saying is our institutions are changing. So as far as like the seminaries go, we have a whole bunch of experimental programs about how to move people, how you, how to ensure that our pastors have the education that they need, but maybe doing it in a different way that's less financially stressful. I mean, one of the problems of ministry, I think, these days is that some of our pastors come out with thousands of dollars worth of debt. So how do we decrease that? United Seminaries has come up with a process. United Seminaries are two seminaries, Lutheran School of Theology in Philadelphia, LSUB, yep, and Gettysburg Seminary came together, um, and they are able, because of a gift of a donor, to offer some tuition-free education. Wardburg has a program, it's really a nice sounding program, where they're putting pastoral candidates in congregations for four years and they're studying for four years. So they're doing both their study and their, their internship at the same time. Luther just came out with an idea about a program where it's going to be, instead of being a three-year program, it'll be two, two continuous years. They will have the summers off, you know, or the summers to do other things. So I think we know that our institutions are changing rapidly and how do we approach that? We're experimenting. I think this is, I don't necessarily, I think that all of us sort of react at some point to the word change, but I think the word that we need to use in this day and age is experiment. And to think about the ways that we can experiment with the way the, the world is changing, we, as church, we need to experiment with what that means for us while holding on to our, you know, to the truth of, of what Jesus does for us. How do we, how do we figure out ways of sharing that truth and, and living that truth in groups in different ways? Does that help at all?
Susan, do you mind if I just speak to that person? Um, just as somebody who has very recently come out of Luther Seminary, I graduated in 2012 for the second time. But, um, as somebody who started seminary in 2007, when there was a lot of land, there was a lot of buildings, there just, and if somebody who was there during the financial crisis that they went through, um, they were trying to maintain buildings and spaces that weren't really being used to their best ability. And the, the school was spending much more time worrying about upkeep of a building than they were about being able to educate their pastors. And Susan is absolutely correct. I mean, I'm a good example. I've come out of seminary with an enormous amount of debt so that I could study and, and be able to equip people. And so I think that, you know, she said that they're, they're trying this accelerated program there at Luther. At Luther also drew another, um, another big donation, they, everybody who enters seminary in the next year, in this next economic year, will go tuition-free. And it goes for a certain amount of time. It's called the Jubilee Scholarship. So we're doing a lot and, um, one thing that we tried to talk a little bit about after the synod assembly for Southeast Minnesota and that I, um, that I know that Steve Bishop Delsor talks about a lot and, um, I know the synod staff talks a lot about, is the leading together that the, the synod is doing, attempting to lift up
attempting to lift up. She talked about the number of pastors who are retiring and the number of pastors who are coming up is about half. You know, the goal, what is the goal for the synod? It's like 35 new leaders in the next
Three years.
Three years.
And many of our pastors are eligible for retirement.
Right, and some of that is also too, what this, like what our congregation and other congregations like us do, which is not only just lifting up people like Nicole Hansen-Lynn, one of our students who's at seminary in Luther right now and going to be graduating and go on to her first call, but also too, some of the things that we do with confirmation students. I don't want to call anybody out, but like, honestly, Katie's son, Nick, has been a huge one where like he and I have been having major conversations about theology and wanting to study more. I mean, look at how Maddie's been involved so much. I mean, Maddie was one of, not only on the transition team, one of three youth at the synod assembly. There were 11 youth in the synod. Three of them are from our congregation. So part of it is just starting now and lifting up so that we have youth who will then, you know, when they go to college, they'll consider it. And then maybe by the time they're done with college, they'll look into seminary. And whether they're rostered or ordained leaders or not. I mean, I went to seminary, but I'm not rostered. But Amanda went to seminary and Amanda is a rostered deacon. I mean, there's lots of ways to serve. And the church will have to change. I mean, but I think part of what we're trying to do here is to, to serve who we are. I mean, change is figuring out who we are and how we help each other. That's mine.
Okay, so I have a few more things I wanted to, I wanted to say. I, I think I've answered some of, or I've done some of this as we've talked. I wanted to talk about where candidates come from. I told you about what happens to your recommendations. I want to talk a little bit about confidentiality. As I talked this evening with the call committee, I told them it's really, really important for them to communicate with a congregation. And they can communicate everything possible about the process. And they can communicate nothing about the individual people that they're, that they're thinking about or looking at. And some congregations say, why not? Well, just think about if it was your pastor. And, you know, and another congregation is looking for a pastor. Whenever, whenever a pastor is in that conversation with another congregation, if it gets back to the congregation that they're serving, it can diminish the trust between the pastor and the congregation. So I have to ask you to trust your call committee. They will keep you informed about the process, but they will not be able to tell you about the people themselves. Make sense? Okay. The Lutheran Church is a very, very small, what do I want to say? You know, six degrees of separation. I just have to tell you this story. I was serving in New Jersey and a pastor came from Plymouth, Minnesota, to New Jersey to be, to be interviewed for the call. Received the call, was there to receive the call the day that the congregation voted because New Jersey does one pastor at a time. They do one name at a time. It's very different. But was there for that day. Received the call, said he would be coming. Got on a plane that afternoon, that Sunday afternoon, to come back to Minnesota. When he walked off of the plane at Minneapolis-St. Paul Airport, he ran into one of his parishioners who said, hey pastor, I hear you have a new call. He had not had the chance to get back to, even to get back and talk to his family. He, but it was already known. What we discovered, we tried to figure out how this happened, but what we discovered was that a woman in the congregation in New Jersey was so excited about her new pastor, she called a really good friend of hers in Baltimore whose sister happened to be a member of the congregation. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we see confidentiality, especially around pastoral names as we have in this, in this process.